Okay, the next items are items number 12, 13, 14, and 15. Item number 12 is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-7185, block 230, lot 5, 321 Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. A federal-style row house built in 1821 and altered in the mid-19th century to accommodate a commercial ground floor. This is an application to construct a rear yard addition and dormer at the rear roof. Item number 13 is an application for a modification of use in bulk, docket number 15-7263, also 321 Canal Street, and this is an application to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a modification of use in bulk pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution. Item number 14 is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-7184, block 230, lot 6, 323 Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. A federal-style row house built in 1821 and altered in the mid-19th century to accommodate a commercial ground floor. This is also an application to construct a rear yard addition and a dormer at the rear roof. And item number 15 is an application for a modification of use in bulk, docket number 15-7264, also 323 Canal Street, and this is also an application to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a modification of use pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners John Graham of Landmark Staff. The application before you is for a pair of building -- sorry, two adjacent buildings on the north side of Canal Street between Mercer and Green Streets. This is 321 in front of you. These buildings may seem familiar, Commissioners, because a year ago in May, you approved a proposal to deconstruct the Canal Street and rear facades on these two adjacent buildings shown here on the plan. That's 321, and the adjacent is 323, to clean and store salvaged materials and to reconstruct the facades. And a miscellaneous amendment to reconstruct the two street facades was issued. I issued it in the beginning of May of this year. The proposal today is for the construction of rear -- two-story rear yard additions. These buildings had, at the time of designation, full rear yard extensions on the ground floor, so the rear additions are going to be on the second and third floor. Here is the existing condition of 321 rear facade, and this shows the second and third floor. The sloped dormer roof would be retained, and you can see here a new dormer posed with the rear facade. Jennifer Lozer will start the discussion of these changes.
And Commissioners, just to be clear, the special permit being sought for both these buildings is simply for use, to allow commercial use on the ground floor and residential upstairs? There's no bulk waiver being sought by this application?
Good, thanks, John.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Lozer, and I'm meeting from in Lockham. I think it's easier if I stand here. As John just mentioned, we are here for two buildings that are -- were built at the same time and are structurally connected, 321 Grand Street and 321 -- I'm sorry, 321 Canal Street and 323 Canal Street. 321 Canal Street has 19 feet of frontage on Canal Street, and 323 has 18 feet of frontage on Canal Street. They are between Mercer and Green Street on the northern side of Canal. As John mentioned, we were here last year because the building was in danger of collapsing, and encourage us from the Department of Buildings and permission from your commission, we conducted a partial demolition, storing and cataloging all the salvageable material on site. In the interim, with Paige Cowley Architects and LPC staff, we are about to begin a 74711 application, which will then be submitted to City Planning. The 74711 application asks for use group six on the ground floor and cellar, and then use group two on second, third, and fourth floors. Each of the residential units will have -- residential floors will have one unit. When we went to design the interior apartments, the layout, it became very clear that it would not be -- not meet the ADA requirements but clearance within the apartment. And thus, we're asking for an additional 337 square feet on 321 Canal Street, which will bring the total floor plate on second and third stories to 1,063 square feet. And then on 323 Canal Street, it would be 464 square feet, which would bring this floor plate to 1,031. I can show you what that will look like there. This is the original, and this will be the extension. The buildings will still maintain a 30-foot rear yard, and in some instances in the back will be in excess of 33 feet. And I'm sorry for flipping through all this. I will come back, but I'm just looking for an aerial where you can see that the proposed expansion is modest compared to where our neighbor -- the adjacent buildings go back. This would be the expanded section of the bulk. Also, the roof pitch on the fourth floor will maintain the same grade of pitch and height. Then with respect to the restoration of the rear facade, let me have a moment. There's enough salvage material from the deconstruction for the -- as John mentioned, the whole front facade will be reconstructed with original brick. Whatever remains will be used in the rear facade, and where necessary, we will use light material in the same size, weight, color, and texture. The roof will be restored in original slate, which was found -- there we go -- which was found during probes under layers of asphalt shingles and tar. The windows will be designed to match the front facade, which are based on historic tax photos. One building will be two over two, and then one -- double hung, and then the other building will be six over six. Buildings will maintain their individual character. Dormer side elevations will be replicated with wood platters to match the historic sightings that were discovered during the probes, and the large window configurations will be maintained from the originals. With the extension of the second and third floor, there we've created this railing which has been redesigned in a federal style to match grounds that you would find in Gracie Mansion or Monticello from the sort of 1821 era. And if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Well, insights will stay good.
We know we have a busy agenda and a tight timeline.
Yeah, but now that you brought up Monticello.
Go ahead. Monticello comes to Canal Street.
One New York.
Yes. Any questions for the outward?
Are we doing both at the same time?
We'll do both at the same time.
So maybe we should just look at the backside of the bedroom?
Sure. That's a good one. Very interesting.
The color rendering shows both, 321 on the left, 323 on the right, or I can pull up the whole presentation of 323, which is separate, but you see both. And because of the wedge-shaped lot of 323, it widens out on the rear facade. Is this visible? No.
Okay.
I have no further questions. It's -- we'll go to testimony, come back to you in a moment. Barbara Zay.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. Last June, the Commission approved a deconstruction of these two 1821 federal-style row houses with promises but no actual plan for the reconstruction. HDC is relieved to see a proposal a year later to reconstruct, and we hope that the applicant is being held to earlier vows that as much original brick as possible will be used, that window frames will be replicated from the historic ones, and that other details will be carefully considered and followed. We find the proposed rear shed dormers inappropriate for what should be reconstructed federal-style row houses. A 2012 approval to enlarge the dormer instructed the staff to work with the applicant to reconfigure the plan in order to reference the historic configuration of a single central dormer. Instead of retaining that proportion and adding to the sides, the elongated peak roof of the proposed makes the dormer more overwhelming than it needs to be. This, along with the fact that the wall of the dormer is in line with the original building's wall and not set back, gives this feature the feel of a rooftop addition rather than a dormer. Thank you.
Okay, Krista Bell-Gough.
Krista Bell-Gough for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Federal houses are relatively rare, and preservation of their original fabric is important, and we're glad that they are salvaging brick. The use of a shed dormer to replace a real historic dormer is an expedient which is unfortunately expanding. First compassing three windows, now this dormer solution, which has been applied elsewhere, has grown to include four windows and a door to a terrace, a scenario that would probably have surprised the founding fathers. It is a shame if the developer's program here is regarded as sacrosanct. The attic of a federal house makes a beautiful open-plan studio, a reasonable alternative to demolishing old roof to shoehorn in a tiny bedroom. Thank you.
Okay, any other testimony? Comment, discuss, response, whatever, if you wish.
We don't have that, I guess.
Okay, fine, good. Okay. Anything else you want to say based on what was said in the testimony?
Sure, sure, thank you. I just wanted to -- in the file, is this 321 or 323?
323.
323, a previously approved 18, but dormer was approved for 323 Canal Street, so we've changed the design a little bit, but the width of the dormer had previously been approved.
Okay. Discussing over there.
Hi, Paige Cowley. I'm Paige Cowley, Architects. We've been studying this. Two things. First of all, there is a companion rendering because we want to highlight one building over the others, so this building is not beige. It looks similar to that, as you know. Second thing is, in this reconstruction, when we started, we thought we had to demolish much more of the building. We actually worked with DOB to keep the roof in its impact and its pitch. So the idea is that everything you see from the front, including all the framing, up to the ridge and then down the backside, is original. That will stay. The dilemma was, in the previous rendition, that was an old tube, or just interior modification. Ultimately, it would have come for 74711. We learned that even though we didn't have to apply ADA access into the building, oddly enough, although you can't reel in, did not have to put an elevator, but the staircase takes up so much space in a building to create 34 inches and a corridor with ADA bathrooms that the building needed to grow. And it was the impression of what -- I'm sorry, it was the reality that forced a fire-rated stair court that now has to grow through the building, which is fine, and you don't see any of the modern conveniences except for an alarm bell and sprinkler head, fire alarm panel in the lobby. We've tried to keep the staircase as compact as possible, and as you can see, here goes the roof, there goes the roof down the backside. Yes, this is a wider dormer, except one of the dormers in the previous rendition was as wide. We needed to maintain that. In fact, we made it smaller so that in the principle of reversibility, one could ever go back and put the roof back, this piece could be taken away and it could be restored. The lower floors, because of the stairway, obviously we just have a hole over one half the stair, the terrace became a conceit because the other thing we needed to do, very important, was the second thing is to be gross from the upper terrace. So the terrace became the transition piece. So I like to think of this as a new type of addition. It's not really a new building. It's a drawer pulled out for the width of the building. The rear wall, what you saw in the elevation, is pulled into the rear yard. We still have a tiny footprint of 39 feet. We want to keep it under the 40. That was very important to us. And the terrace acts as a transition to allow the staircases to go to the rear yards and then exit out to the building. So it's a little more complicated than just trying to dress up a rear facade in formal clothing. We really were hamstrung with planning issues, DOB, and of course, major cost for the reconstruction. It's taken about six to seven months to dismantle the building by hand. It's all stored. We go there every day, and Timlich calls me every three weeks. So I just want to give you -- or the client who, too, John Lozer, to make sure.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Paige, and Jessica, and team. Discussion now, Michael.
All right. I think that these poor buildings have been through the wringer, and they are quite small. So I think that the rear yard additions, given that there was already evidence of one-story additions and that they are rather small and that the block is quite, about as far from prospect heights as you could get conceptually, I think that the rear yard additions are reasonable and appropriate. I think that the way that they're being handled in terms of the fenestration is appropriate. All the boxes have been checked in terms of how we tend to prefer these things to be handled with the building's individuality being maintained, et cetera. I think that the only real contentious issue here is the dormers, or are the dormers. And I think that while there may have been better solutions, I think that the solutions reached were appropriate, and they do retain the concept of a single dormer, which is typical of the federal period, even though they are a bit wider. They aren't shed dormers. Both of the testimonies seem to suggest they were shed dormers. They're actually not. They're regular old gable dormers. And I think that it's a liberty taken at the rear, non-visible to the public. It's a clearly contemporary addition. I think it's okay.
Agreed totally. Fred.
Agree almost totally. It's not visible from any vantage point, so you have to acknowledge that, but something -- I just find that this dormer is -- it's just not right. It's just -- you can't pull a gabled dormer like that, and it's just not right. So I think it needs to be reworked. I'm trying to rework it myself, which is not my job really here, but I think it can be, and I think even a shed dormer would be better than this. I know a shed dormer is not necessarily a federal-style. Accoutrement to a roof, but I grant the applicants need to create more space up here on this top floor, so retaining the single existing gable dormer has to be reworked, but I just can't go along with this current design.
And we approved a couple of these with double gables and a stretcher in between. That's a possibility, perhaps.
And Commissioners, what are your views on the special permit application?
Sorry.
The 74711 application for the change of use.
Oh yeah, what about the change of use? Totally, yes. Of course, I'm fine with a change of use. Yes.
Yeah, I certainly, yes, I'm okay with a change of use, and I think in general, the restoration is fine. And it sounds like we're going to need some redesign of the rear gable, which -- I mean the rear dormer gable. And the suggestion of maybe, I was just thinking maybe a double myself might be a way to do it, to accomplish their needs. Yeah. But...
All right, so we have to think about that. We don't have the six anyway to act, so now we have a little bit more time to address or think through Fred's concerns and see if there's a way to satisfy that and provide a solution that will allow us to go forward on it. But we, in any event, we can't do it right now, so we'll close this hearing for the moment. Motion in a second. Without objection, the hearing is closed. Thank you all. Talk to the staff, keep talking to the staff. And the community board did, we did get an email from them. You must have emailed them just now, but they've just emailed it unanimous.
Direct line.
You'd have the direct line. Unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're now going to go back to the last of the items from this morning that we presented without a quorum, and they're items number 12 through 15. They are at 321 and 323 Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. For each building, there is an application for a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of a rear yard addition and a dormer at the rear roof. And for both buildings, there is also an application for a modification of use to allow retail use at the ground floor and residential use on the upper floors.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Commissioners John Graham of Landmark Staff. This application was heard just before lunch. It involves two adjacent buildings, 321 and 323 Canal Street. You will probably all remember that these buildings came to a public hearing last year. This was almost a demolition by neglect. The building was severely deteriorated. Both buildings were severely deteriorated, and the Commission gave a permit to take down the front and rear facades of both of these very small row houses. They are entirely -- the block plans are shown up here. There's 321, there's 323. They are both on lots that are entirely landlocked. You cannot see the rear facade of either one. The existing building was a very small building, 38 feet deep. The applicants are proposing to construct a rear yard addition on both of these buildings. The existing rear facade is not visible or in a very deteriorated condition. There's a section here, and you can see right there is where the lot line, the rear facade line was. Both of these buildings had full lot, one-story extensions on the ground floor, so the rear yard addition was going to be on the second floor and on the third floor. And on the fourth floor, the applicants were proposing to construct dormers on the rear The Commissioners who saw the proposal in the morning were concerned about the design of the dormers, so Paige Cowley's office went back to the drawing board and quickly revised their proposal. And this little handout you just got shows the revised proposal. I don't have it to show on the screen, but it includes three small peak roofs on each of these buildings. This is 321, and this is 323.
So she has quickly sketched up an idea in response to your comments about the shape of the dormer, and will continue to work with staff if the direction is to do so.
Okay. Do you like three or two?
Two and a stretch. Well, we had previously approved two with a stretch in between on this building, so I think either one could work.
Working with the staff.
Working with the staff. So we approved this all this morning, or with the conceptual, everything except this last issue, which we gave these concrete comments on, and there's also an MOU for change of use, right?
Change of use only, and the restoration work is the full reconstruction of the front facade, new wood windows, new wood storefronts, and returning slate to the pitched roofs.
Right, slate, which they discovered, actually.
Which they discovered.
Several layers of...
So the first thing for the fourth is...
Or to do it just straight in between the two pavements.
Okay, any further questions? Is this the right direction? Everyone persuaded? Okay, let's then go forward. Fred?
What's that?
Four motions. You can do the first two, Fred, which would be what number?
Item 12.
12, item 12. Please.
On the record.
Yeah, on camera.
Wasn't on. 321 Canal Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Application is to construct a rear yard addition and a dormer at the rear roof. I recommend approval, noting that the rear facade is not visible from any public thoroughfare, that the height of the proposed addition will preserve the pitched roof, a character-defining feature of this building, and will not overwhelm the building, that the block is occupied by larger buildings which were built as store-and-loft buildings or buildings altered for commercial use prior to designation. Therefore, the size of the proposed additions will not overwhelm the adjacent buildings or diminish a cohesive central green space, that the rear facade of the building has been previously altered with the construction of the one-story addition extending to the rear lot line and other facade alterations, that because the existing one-story full lot rear yard extension was in place at this property at the time of designation, the proposed construction will not eliminate any green space, that the existing building is not part of a row of matching buildings, therefore, the proposed alterations will not diminish the unity of a group of buildings, that the design of the proposed rear facade will maintain the residential character and scale of this type of building, that aligning the rear dormer with the location of the historic rear facade will recall the historic rear facade, that the brick cladding, multi-light, double-hung windows, slate cladding of the pitched roof, and the wood clavards on the sides of the dormer set into the pitched roof will recall the historic rear facade elements on this and other buildings of this age and type and serve the long-term preservation of the building, and that the proposed work will not diminish the architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
All in favor? I oppose. That's approved, and I'll do number 13, which is the modification of use in bulk for 321 Canal, Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
Bob, just the previous item was an approval with modifications to work with the staff to revise the dormer as it was proposed along the lines.
This is not yet formalized? Okay.
Amend that.
And that the amended proposal by the applicant included a slight change to the dormers showing three peaked-roof dormers, but the applicant will continue to work with staff to revise and perfect that design.
Okay, second is amended. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Now back to the MOU, 321 Canal. Recommend approval here, finding that the restorative work proved pursuant to Caney 147210 and miscellaneous amendment 157442 will restore missing architectural details and return the building closer to its historic appearances, that the exterior facade work will reinforce the architectural and historic character of the building, Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Restorative work will bring the building up to sound first-class condition in aid in its long-term preservation, that the implementation of the city technical maintenance plan will ensure the continued maintenance of the building in a sound first-class condition, and that the owners of the designated building have committed themselves to establishing a city technical maintenance plan legally enforceable by the LPC under the provisions of a restrictive deck, which will bind all heirs, successors, and assigns, and will be recorded at the New York County Registrar's Office. Second, all in favor? I oppose. And Fred, you want to go for 14?
Sure.
And then I'll do 15, and then we're done.
Okay, 323 Canal Street, the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The application is to construct a rear yard addition and a dormer at the rear roof. I recommend approval, noting that the rear facade is not visible from any public thoroughfare, that the height of the proposed addition will preserve the pitched roof, a character-defining feature of this building, and will not overwhelm the building, that this block is occupied by larger buildings which were built as store-and-loft buildings or buildings altered for commercial use prior to designation, therefore, the size of the proposed additions will not overwhelm the adjacent buildings or diminish a cohesive central green space, that the rear facade of the buildings -- a building has been previously altered with the construction of the one-story addition extending to the rear lot line and other facade alterations, that because the existing one-story full lot rear yard extension was in place at this property at the time of designation, the proposed construction will not eliminate any green space, that the existing building is not part of a row of... building is not part of a row of matching buildings, therefore, the proposed alterations will not diminish the unity of a group of buildings, that the design of the proposed rear facade will maintain the residential character and scale of this type of building, that aligning the rear dormer with the location of the historic rear facade will recall the historic rear facade, that the brick cladding, multi-light, double-hung windows, slate cladding on the pitched roof, and the wood clabbards on the sides of the dormer set into the pitched roof will recall the historic rear facade elements of this and other buildings of this age and type and serve the long-term preservation of the building, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, and furthermore, that the applicant has submitted an alternate arrangement of the dormer, which she will review, continue to review with staff to perfect it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
That's approved, and the last MOU, Canal. City Planning relating to an application for modification of use pursuant to Section 74-711, demanding, recommending approval, finding that the restorative...
Work, excuse me. Approved pursuant to CNE 147210 and miscellaneous amendments 157442 will restore missing architectural details and return the building closer to its historic appearances, that the exterior facade work will reinforce the architectural and historic character of the building in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, that the restorative work will bring the building up to first, sound first-class condition and aid in its long-term preservation, that the implementation of a cyclical maintenance plan will ensure that the continued maintenance of the building will ensure the continued maintenance of the building in a sound first-class condition, and that the owners of the designated building have committed themselves to establishing a cyclical maintenance plan legally enforceable by the LPC under the provisions of a restrictive DEC, which will bind all heirs of successors and assigns, and which will be recorded at the New York County Registrar's Office. All in favor in that? I oppose. Done. Thank you.
Thank you.